You don't need it. There's a, there's an open. Open break in your center. Good evening, everybody. I'm calling the public hearings for zoning code to order. I'd ask for the, stand for the question. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Steve Burke, do the roll call, please.
Councilman Coleman.
Here.
Councilman Anawin, here. Councilman Paddock.
Here.
Councilwoman Seeta, absent. Supervisor of the.
Here. Okay, on tonight's agenda, we have five public hearings, all involving individual chapters or sections of the zoning code. This is the beginnings of the town board's review of the zoning and subdivision codes based on the recommendations from the zoning review committee. Each public hearing will be on one particular topic. We will take them in order. And when we do, first, I will ask for comments from anybody here in, in person. Then we will ask anybody who is on Zoom if they wish to make comments. And when everybody is completed with one opportunity to speak, we will go around for a second time if anybody would like to say something in addition. The order tonight is local law E, which is yard setback regulations. Local law F, which is chapter one, I'm sorry, that's chapter 140-12. Local law F, which is 140-14 agricultural use. Next will be local law G, which is 140-14.1 animal husbandry. Next will be local law H, which will be 140-16, a new chapter that we're adding wetlands and stream buffer requirements. And next will be local law I, which will be article six, which deals with chapters 140-39 through 140-44, non-conforming uses and structures. These are the topics of discussion tonight that we are asking for comment on. We won't be entertaining comments on other sections of the zoning code tonight. Those will be coming at a later time when we get to those chapters. So with that, I'll open up the public hearing for 140-12 yard setback regulations. I'll ask the town court, has anyone signed up to speak on that? Oh, sorry. Or actually, with only three people here, does anyone? Okay. Does anyone wish to speak on the yard setback regulations? Okay. Yes, okay, fair, thank you.
Seeing comments for all five of these, and that is that I hope that we keep the public hearing open for a period of time, up to a month at least, because of Claire not always with her limited interest, but also that it's a little confusing. And I think the session that we had Sunday, the two of your members were asked, and very well received by everyone I talked to, more specifically me. But I think, and I think more of that is maybe needed for people to understand what's going on here. Because I hate to see people get really angry two or three months or years from now when they find out what actually is.
To, normally, we don't respond back, but to clarify, all of these will be held open. In reality, we will probably be adopting them, many local laws, all at the same meeting. So because otherwise, if we adopt one chapter and not the other chapters, that chapter would go into effect and not the other one. So the reality is, all of these public hearings will be held open until a later time. And once we finish all of the chapters, there will be a day of public hearings or a meeting of public hearings where each one will be continued and then closed.
Can I continue my comment?
Please.
There also may be some cross play between them. I don't know which ones are coming yet. But we should at least have a chance to look at them and see if, I mean, well, like the first and the last ones tonight are related to some extent. And I think that would be helpful also.
Understood and agreed. That, in way of explanation, which hopefully we'll clarify, we're doing these one chapter at a time rather than an entire zoning code of 200 and some pages at one time, because history has shown itself that when you do one whole code, it takes years to go through that process with all the reviews. We're, we're taking a page from the way a self is did theirs last year, which made a lot of sense by doing chapter by chapter. But as I said, they will all be held open until it is completed, and then we will do a final hearing on all of them. We may or may not combine them into one local law because of referral processes. If we did that, we may have to re-refer everything to the county, to the local planning board. We haven't figured that part out yet. But that is why we're doing it the way we're doing it, is for simplicity. There are some chapters that are non-issues at all or minor issues. There are others that people have more comment on, so that's the reason for this. Anyone else here present wish to speak before we go to the Zoom? This is on the 140-12 yard setback regulations. Okay, so Sarah Betts, do you wish to comment on this? Or you could just raise your, actually, for the people on the, on the Zoom, if you can raise your hand if you wish to speak, that might help, or you can just unmute yourself. Okay, neither one is. I'm thinking that is, are you checking, have you checked that we are streaming out?
Yeah, we're streaming.
Okay, okay.
You're streaming. I'm just don't have anything to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to be sure. Thank you very much. I appreciate your, your confirming. So with that, I would ask then that we, I'd ask for a motion to continue the public hearing, local law E.
Make a motion to continue the local, the public hearing.
To a time to be determined.
I'll second.
Have a second, Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Understand. For the board members, I did send you the county and the local planning board comments that were received on this local law. No other correspondence. The next public hearing is on local law F, agricultural use. Chapter 140-14, by way of explanation, this was previously 140-14.1 in our current code. We are reordering and flip-flopping what is known as animal husbandry and agricultural use. Animal husbandry, which will be our next chapter, is more the smaller homeowners that may have chickens, goats, some types of farm animals. Agricultural use is a more generalized local law section of zoning that deals with all agriculture. Whether that, that is a farm operation is certified by New York State or a smaller homeowner, what sometimes is known as a hobby farm. So that is, this is the general agricultural use. So with that, I'll open it up to comments. Then we'll expect Mr. Keller, I'm thinking you might want to speak then.
A couple, couple comments, more general comment. I would, I would ask the town board to, in response to this law, also look into possibly reworking the strength of the town like farm law if we go forward.
Okay.
I know that's not a mistake now, like, it doesn't really play like the town where this.
Okay.
The other, the other thing, not to be taken, but I'm not sure the right terminology is certified as agricultural use.
We actually received that comment back from the Olson County Planning Board. It's a New York State certified, yes. So the word "New York State" needs to be added, and that was their comment.
That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on the agriculture? From the two people on the phone, Julie or Sarah, do either of you wish to speak?
No, thank you.
I'm just listening. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'd ask for a motion then to hold this open to a date to be determined.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and a second?
I'll second.
The county comments, and we also received from Kate, the Ag and Markets comments, which came in this, late this afternoon. Apologies, his comments were in red, but it was scanned, so it came all black and white. We will set up the new document tomorrow, so you'll be able to see the comments in red. So our apologies on that. It's just a matter of the settings on the town copy are default to black and white. So we will get the correct, let's do. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? The next public hearing, local law. This one is, I'm sorry, it's missed, G. 2022, this is the 140, 140-14.1 animal husbandry, which, as stated before, addresses non-New York State certified agricultural farm operations. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this? Okay, anybody on the phone wish to speak on this topic? Okay, I would ask for a motion to hold this public hearing open for a time to be determined.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Again, on this, you received the comments. It wasn't clear to me if the Ag and Markets was just on the agricultural use around this one as well. I believe they were kind of on somewhat overlap. I think it was mostly on the agricultural stuff. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed?
Okay.
Can I, can I ask, I looked at it very quickly, is the Ag and Markets comments, that we can request more substantial?
Yes.
Have we done that, or should we?
I, I haven't really looked at it, so I skimmed them, but because it was hard to pick out what was what, and I was getting the bills ready, so I don't really know what the comments were.
And they did say they could review it more thoroughly if you'd like them to.
And I think based on the fact we're going to hold this open, let's just ask to make a review of what though. I did have a conversation by phone with them earlier in the month, and because they thought the public hearing was earlier in the month, and I told them it was today, but we'll follow up with it. Next is local law H. This is a addition of a new section of code, wetlands and stream buffer requirements. The town does not currently have a wetlands local law, the stream buffer, we do have, it is part of the setback section. It would be moved to this some degree. So I'd open that public hearing for comment. Okay, anyone? So this would be covering wetlands that are designated by New York State or by federal designated wetlands. What this would do is it would establish how they should, how they have to be reviewed during a review process by the planning board. Aaron, you're probably more familiar with this than I am, if you, if you can add in anything on it.
Yeah, it also, it just creates a two-tiered setback department for different types of water bodies. So it does include, it does expand also upon the definition of wetlands and streams a bit from what is currently in the code. Currently, this draft would have unnamed streams in some, not all unnamed, some in that. So it would be those areas with the buffer requirement. So each buffer is a 50-foot buffer and has different, there's a section that restricts and allows certain types of land use in that buffer.
I think, I think the answer is possible that a swamp or a marsh would be considered. But this might apply. If you're concerned about your property's specificity, this might apply.
That's a couple acres.
Yeah.
Unless the law is true.
Yeah. So if you have specific concerns related to the law, if, if your, if your property needs to improve it a matter.
Well, I don't know. It's ever been, you read, that used to say it, but it's always.
Well, mo, 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 definitely be.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, and then possibly any other physical area in the swamp area. So, yeah, if you have more specific questions, definitely, follow the comments.
Yeah, the, the, New York State DEC and the federal government designate wetlands, and they, they do visual layers from, from above with the, with the areas that are known to be wet. If, if it gets to the point of a project, a physical delineation of the wetlands is done on the property, then we return for that. Yes, ma'am.
Because I've been studying this for a long time. The DEC also puts out seminars and webinars on tiny, tiny little creeks and brooks. Their whole web and network that flow into each other and create the brooks and creeks. And it's almost like a peccary system of water bodies, because the tiny is going free multiplied by how many there are. It's huge impact on, 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 whether it's natural or. So what I'm not sure about is whether the town has to be confined to stay in federal recognition, but we can create a, that would include the non-precious. So many, and we have so many excellent organizations that have done work in search and, you know, they'll take into account a vital, a role in very small wetlands and rural pools playing in quality of the environment.
I'm sorry, wait a minute.
Okay. For the people who just came in, we're, we're on, currently on local law H, which is our wetlands and stream buffer requirement in public hearing. If you have any comments you want to make on that, that would be time. And also, if the board is okay when we're done, if you had comments on the original ones, we'll give you the opportunity to speak on those as well. But if you want to speak on the wetlands one right now.
So we just talking about streams, okay, that run through the land or they run, yeah, they run, you know, with land, they're grown alongside the stream. And maybe have to do with setbacks in time, because I don't know, you may already dealt with setbacks. But is it all right, and going with these proposed changes, if you're running to our right for somebody to build a house right on the stream that runs, you know, on their path there running? We have to make, we just are going to be buying property that, you know, is ripe, going to extend into the stream, right through, you know, the land. They already own the land on the other side of the street. They've already built two houses right next to the stream, which maybe there's no regulation to that setback. And maybe people are allowed to build houses right on, you know, right next to the stream. I'm just kind of curious, have there ever been any regulations about that? And do these regulations that are proposing even speak to the issue of whether you can build your house right next to a stream, like sure.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's more for us to take comment, but I'd be happy to, once we're done, I'd be happy to sort of answer your questions, if that's okay.
Okay.
But yeah, thank you for your, for your, your point.
I'm going to turn it into a comment.
You, you sort of already did. Does anyone else wish to speak on this? Okay, we lost our two people on the phone, so we would agree on that. So I'd ask for a motion to hold this public hearing open at a time to be determined.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Understand. Okay. We'll go on to the local law I, which is article six, which addresses non-conforming uses and structures. This is 140-39 through 140-44. 140-39 will be a section of definitions that are added in this article section. 140-39.1 will be the old 140-39, which is right to continue non-conforming uses. 140-40 is maintenance, normal maintenance and repair sections of non-conforming uses and structures. 140-41 is restoration, reconstruction, or re-establishment. And we are deleting the word, those words and replacing it with restoration, replacement, or replacement with expansion. 140-42 is changes, additions, and expansions. 140-43 is use of existing non-conforming lots of record. That section is being deleted and moved to 140-44. 140-43 will be a new section dealing with abandonment and re-establishment. So this is, this section, this whole article section deals with uses or structures that are pre-existing and do not conform with the current zoning code and how they can be utilized, changed, expanded, or not, as the case may be. So with that, is there any comment on this section? Eric? Oh, yes, sir. Sorry.
Thank you, Mike. So trying to get an understanding of the difference between grandfathering and, you know, being allowed to continue non-conformity plus the analogy of, as well as anything to do non-conformity music. So we have horses grazing in our field, and we have a barn that is on another property that we own, okay, which is a contiguous property. And a horse is born in the barn, and we graze in the field. And this law seems to say you cannot extend your use onto another property. So is that activity all of a sudden become what was informed to non-conformity?
Yeah, I, probably, individual questions might be best suited if you and I had a conversation afterward, because I can easily answer these and, but in order to keep the, the process going, if it becomes a dialogue, it kind of loses, so, but I'm happy to answer your questions later. Okay, are there any other comments on this?
It's just our last chance of the whole meeting here. I have got a generic question.
Um, you can put it out now. I mean, I'm going to go back to the ones that we've already done for the benefit of the people who came in.
Do we think the, you all think that the red lines and the other copies you got that are available online are now, are accurate in terms of including the new language and showing clear cross talk?
So the, yes, so the short answer is on that, the ones that are available on the, the, the ECO 360 legislative, which is the link from our public hearing, those versions are the most accurate ones. I don't know how to answer it any other way.
Try a little more, so I can.
You go on the town website.
Yeah.
And you go to the public hearing notice for today's meeting.
Yeah.
There is a link where it shows where they are, the, it's called ECO 360. It's where our town code is housed on the webs, on the, on the web.
We could do a demo of the YouTube, you know.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
I, I couldn't hear you.
I'm going to show you on the screen how to do it. I'll tell you what, Larry, let me, let me finish the public hearings and then I'll go through that.
It's for everyone, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But the most recent one is the one that is on the legislative, it's called, when you see it, it will make sense.
I do.
That is the, that is what the version that is there for the public hearings.
But there are some then following up.
The other ones were previous versions. This is.
Rid of them? Do people are going to go potentially and get them? Is there any way to get rid of them?
No, because it's part of the public notices and stuff, so it's, yeah, yeah. Unfortunately, no.
Yeah.
So, yeah, yeah. Understood.
Where can you get copies when you do not have a computer?
You can ask the town court for copies. We can get.
That might be the safest way.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And anytime we make changes, there will be new, you know, new public hearing, unless they are changes like correction of a spelling mistake or something like that. But then any, anytime we make substantial changes of anything, which is why all these public hearings are being held open.
I promise it's not.
Okay.
It seems to me that when you say you've got a non-conforming building that gets damaged, you will be penalized in some way by having your timeline changed for getting there to this non-conforming building that got damaged or you need to do something to it. And that seems unfair to the people that were lined up to have this non-conforming building that gets.
And. Could you just clarify which, which section it is you're referring?
This is changing the timeline and the method for fixing or building a non-conforming building that is damaged or one or two. So I think that that could become a hindrance for people who have a non-conforming building, but yet it is damaged. And maybe they now have to wait for some process to take place to get insurance to have the. to get insurance to help them rebuild or whatever.
Okay.
It just seems unfair to have these restrictions, changing the timelines on one building.
Okay. No, thank you. Okay. The gentleman who just came in, do you have any, we're on local law I, do you have any comments?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'd ask for a motion then to hold the public hearing open at a time to be determined.
I'll make that motion.
One second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, I'm going to backtrack to the first set of public hearings that we did before. I know some people came in at the last moment, so. Local law E is the yard setback regulations. The people who just came in, if you have any comments to make on those, I'd reopen it to allow you to make your comments. Okay. Next would be local law F, which is agricultural use. Either of you have any comments to make? Okay, next will be local law G, Section one forty fourteen point one, animal husbandry. Okay, local law H, which is the wetlands and stream buffer. Okay, and we did I when everybody was here. People can continue to make comments. You can send them in to the town clerk by either email or in writing. You can drop them off there. They should be in writing, not just verbal comments, because that way there's a record that the town clerk can then share with all the board members. As I said earlier, all these public hearings will be held open until we are completed with all the chapters of the zoning code. And it will either be adopted case by case, or section by section, or it will be adopted as one. It's still to be determined yet how we do that. And to show everybody how to get to ECO three sixty, I will do that right now. So if you go to the Town of Rochester website. Wow, I don't know why, because my header is hiding everything. So on the Town of Rochester, there's a section at the top called Codes and Ordinances. If you click on that, there is a section on the side called Public Documents Legislation. You click on that, you will see all the current legislation that is being considered. So the draft local laws for public hearing are D, E, F, G, H, and I. And added to that will be J through N, which we just put up this past week. They will be added there tomorrow. So that, if you click on that, say for example, the prohibited uses, you will see the red line version of the code. What the red line version is, is it shows you, everything in red is a change from the existing code. If it's in black, it's the existing code.
You have crossed out?
There are cross-outs where there are deletions, or if it's added red words, those are additions. Some are moving from one section to another, but they are still shown in red. So.
Can you, for the slow students, would you please go back in one more time? Sorry, how does this sound like?
Yeah, so from the townofrochester.ny.gov.
Wait, wait, what page do you want right now?
The homepage.
Okay, good.
If you go to townofrochester.ny.gov, this is the page, the homepage you will be brought to.
Also have up there, Codes and Ordinances.
Codes and Ordinances is the link. Then on the left side, what is there is our current codes. The legislation tab is all the ones that are currently being considered. Anybody who is interested in our ambulance districts, the information is there. The category draft local laws for public hearing are the ones that are being, are currently held open. And the new ones that were just added from our meeting last week will be up tomorrow. Those, those public hearings will be held the last Thursday in August. And that will be local law J, K, L, M, and N. So as we continue this process, we will probably be into double letters by the time we're done. And then hopefully by December or January, at the worst, we'll be having a public hearing on all this. If we had waited to do them all as one code, I guarantee we would be much longer than that time.
I didn't have to worry about it. Um, is there an update on the now and, and, uh, uh, home and summaries?
Um, let's, yeah, let's, let's finish up with public hearings first, because that's, that's what this agenda is right now, we can't really discuss, can't legally. Our agenda right now is public hearings. Once we close all that meeting, we'll go into the other meeting, and I can do that, Larry. It's, it's.
I don't, I mean, it's one of those, I don't care.
I know, I just.
And I know you do.
Yeah, so gotta follow the rules. Mary Lou will be on me if I start having other meetings during public hearing. No?
You're darn right I will.
See?
Thought you were gone, sorry.
No, I'm up there in the corner.
Okay. We haven't closed anything yet. Yes, we did. Yeah. Yes, yes, and then I went back to the other ones in case I missed. But let me just get us back on this, stop sharing here. Okay, so with that, I'd ask for a motion to close the public hearing portion of the meeting, not the public hearings themselves.
So that's an emotional journey.
Yeah, motion to adjourn. I'll say, Aaron. And, okay, so the public hearings are now closed.
For the day.
For the day. Here it is.
We will be starting, stopping this meeting, and then starting the one on.
That's, I'm just getting to that.
Sorry.
So we will be ending that, for, for the public, we will be ending this meeting. We will begin our audit meeting, also available on YouTube. And actually, Mary Lou, well, no, I have to do it that way, right? I can't, I can't, we can't talk about other matters during the public hearing, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
This is not a regular meeting.
Yep, so we will close this meeting, and then we will be reopening in the audit meeting. And we will explain the answer to your question, Larry, during that.
Okay.
So.